Was gonna go down there. Which I'm praying he's not the source of the flu.
He's not the source of the, the germ bag.
They usually are. That's how we got our first round of COVID way back when.
Get that, man. I've got an eight-year-old that's sick all the time.
A life in the dirt. Schoolteacher, so I'm hoping some of that immunity is.
Well, she's got that immunity.
Yeah, it was, you know, even a windy cold day at the beach is still a day.
It's still a day at the beach. It's better than a day at the office.
Hey, Jesse, how are ya?
Not really, unfortunately. I mean, that's the way January, February.
This is because it's like a PDF. If you do this, it'll just take it slow, or you can just ask me and I can click through. So whatever's easier.
Distillery project.
So because it's.
I saw that they're doing the rivalry soon.
You might just have to do more than one click, because if I put it in full screen.
It's really tiny.
Mm-hmm.
Giving them.
Um, or you can just look at me and I can click it for you. Just whatever. Yeah, if it goes to. And I can switch. Are most of them horizontal besides the front one?
Yeah.
Oh, try the arrows.
Yeah.
I see what it looks like.
Yeah, and I think wins really won.
Yeah, we're trying to do as best we can, but it's gonna be kinda challenging.
And the label that they came up with, the journey, that was cool. Yeah, yeah, I thought it was cool. Yeah, right, right? Some of my best audio I did. That's right.
Then I can just. Rub graphs.
Are we, are we live? Okay. Good evening and welcome. We are going to begin with a work session this evening to talk about our audit for the budget year that ended last June. But before we do, I'm gonna turn the floor over to our city manager real quickly, and then we've got some business to do with Mr. Wolford. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening, everyone. Before we get started this evening, I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize a new employee that'll be joining us on March seventeenth, Charlie Goins. Uh, Charlie is with us this evening from Tucker, Georgia. Charlie is a Salem native and has spent a lot of time in, in the Roanoke Valley, working with Salem and Roanoke County, and has a, a long experience with recreation and facilities. And we were very glad to see that he was interested in the position of Parks and Rec Director. And after going through a thorough interview process, Charlie is our guy. And Charlie accepted the position. Charlie will be starting with us on March seventeenth. Charlie, anything you wanna share with the group?
I just wanna thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to getting to Radford and Parks and Recreation.
Thank you and welcome. We're glad to have you here.
Charlie's not, Charlie has to get back to Georgia tomorrow, so he's not gonna stay with us during the evening. But he's been in town most of the day, had the opportunity to take him over to meet with the Parks and Rec staff this afternoon at three. So he, and you got back from that. I, I, we were there about thirty minutes, and then he was still talking, and I left, and I was a little nervous about that. I didn't know if that, I didn't know if that'd turn him loose or not. But Charlie, thank you again for being here tonight, and look forward to seeing you again soon.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you and welcome. We're excited for all you're gonna do with us. We appreciate it. Okay, at this time, Mr. Wolford is a bit under the weather, so we need to bring him into our meeting. So first thing we'll do is ask, Guy, will you state your location and your reason for not being able to be at the meeting this evening?
I'm at my home here in Radford and feeling kinda poorly and didn't wanna bring whatever I've got to you guys.
We're sorry you're sick. But council, do we have a motion to allow Mr. Wolford to participate electronically? Do we have a second? A motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, Guy, you are live, so you'll be able to hear what's going on, and you can participate. But you're on the microphone, so anything you say will just pop out over the mic, okay?
Okie dokie.
All right, thank you very much. Well, folks, I'm gonna turn the floor back over to Mr. Meadows as we talk about budget and finance and look back at the 2023-24 years. So Craig?
Mayor, again, good evening, everyone. It is that time of year where you receive a report from the auditors with the fiscal year 2024 audit. Uh, first, I wanna recognize Calista Linkus and, and the staff of the city for the great job that they did pulling all this together. Audit, as most of you know, is no small feat. And when you are a small organization like Radford, it, it falls on one or two, and here it falls on Calista. So I appreciate all of Calista's hard work in, in getting this report to you. I think you're gonna hear from the report itself this evening that things were in good order in terms of what the auditors needed to complete their work. But at this point, I'll recognize Corbin Stone with Robinson Farmer Cox to share the news of fiscal 2024.
Thanks for having me. I'm gonna try to work through my, my handout, same handout we had last year. Uh, we just added a column for all of the graphs and charts. Uh, the audit did go well in terms of getting information we needed and preparing the financial statements, or really compiling those financial statements on behalf of the city. Uh, the document is a hundred and fifty-three pages long, so it's no small feat to pull that together. Uh, and governmental accounting is unique, um, in a lot of respects compared to for-profit counting or not-for-profit counting. So it, it is a challenge to get all that together. Like I said, you did receive what we call an unqualified or unmodified opinion, which means we believe the financial statements are correct. And I'll kinda walk you through some of the numbers. Now, this is a table on page one. I think you all have a copy of the handout there. The same table we gave you last year. And I'm gonna flip to it, 'cause I can hardly see it on the screen. I'm gonna flip to it, and my record's here, too. Same table we gave you last year, showing your fund balance at the top. Fund balance is effectively, uh, almost a modified cash basis of accounting. Um, so we take cash, short-term receivables, subtract short-term payables, and come back to fund balance. And you can see fund balance for the general fund went from $2.2 million to $2.3 million to a negative 1.9 in total. Uh, primarily because you were using ARPA funds. You received eight-point-six million dollars or so in ARPA funds back in twenty-two. You've used that money in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then in twenty-four, you actually took out a revenue anticipation note, I think in the summer of twenty-three, late summer maybe of twenty-three. And all, and that, that revenue anticipation note shows up as a liability. So it's treated a little differently. ARPA funds, that's a revenue. You get to keep it. The revenue anticipation note, because it's for less than a year, shows up as a liability. So it directly impacts fund balance. Uh, so the drop-off in fund balance is largely because of that. Obviously, fund balance is not where you need it to be. It needs to be quite a bit higher. We've talked about that the last couple of years, that it's just not adequate, uh, at an adequate level to provide enough reserves for the city. Total fund balance for all your governmental funds dropped from $4.3 million to $707. Um, and then you can see, of course, highway maintenance actually increased. You receive money from the state. If you don't spend it, it gets carried over to the next year. Ultimately, it has to be spent on highway improvements or maintenance. Restricted and non-spendable funds stood at $4.7 million. Now, a portion of that is restricted, but you've spent at this point in time items that would qualify for those restrictions, which you have to tell us so we can remove it from restricted down to unrestricted. So that number grew from 3.7 million to 4.7 million. Like I said, some of that could get moved down to unrestricted, but we have to talk about it. Primarily fire funds, which is about 700,000 of that. Unassigned and unrestricted is negative $4.5 million. So right last year, it was $66,000. Of course, that's not, not an adequate level, and we talked about that. Long-term liabilities, $56 million. Of course, you issued school debt back in twenty-one, I believe. And ultimately, you're responsible for that debt, and that debt service, I wanna say is about 1.5 to 2.2 million dollars a year. I'm gonna look it up real quick. Um, and that comes directly out of the tax, out of your tax assessments. You don't have any sort of state or federal grant that's gonna help you with that. Uh, actually, probably about two, two million dollars, a little over two million dollars per year. So you're not gonna have any federal or state grants that help you with that. So that's a direct hit on your taxes, if you will. Finally, down at the bottom, let's work our way down. Total debt or total long-term obligations, I should say, stood at $56 million. That includes pension liabilities, post-employment benefits that you may have provided. So if somebody can stay on your health insurance when they retire, something like that, that's a liability that ultimately you're gonna have to fund. Uh, we spoke earlier, with the inflation that we're seeing and the cost of living adjustments that we're seeing, what do you think's gonna happen to your pension liabilities? They're gonna go up. And so that means the funding levels, the percentage of payroll is also gonna go up. So we can expect to see over the next couple of years, as VRS kind of sorts through those, those COLA increases, that you're gonna see an increase in funding your retirement liabilities. City population down below. Ended the year, according to the Eldon Cooper Center, about 17,300 of, we think of that. We're not really sure. Um, but the Radford University enrollment stood at, this fall, 5,225. That's on campus, fall, main, main campus. And you can see that has dropped kinda precipitously. We talked about that last year, from about 9,400 back in 2013. Uh, so we had 9,000 kids on campus, and now we have a little over half that. And obviously, that's, that's affecting the local economy. Debt per capita, 3260. Compared to other cities around the state, you're below the level. So that's one good thing to point out. You don't have an overhang of a, the overhang of a debt burden, a significant debt burden. State average last year was $7,853 per capita for cities. Unrestricted cash balances went negative this year. Remember, you've got that, that tax anticipation note. So unrestricted cash balances across all funds, $71,419 negative. Um, again, you've got the RAN that you're gonna have to pay off. Um, so that is calculated in that balance. The next page, I'm just going over information for the, we call them business-type or enterprise-type funds. But effectively, uh, things you do to make, to make money that are more of a, of a for-profit type endeavor. Water and sewers net position, you can see ended the year at about $7 million, just below $7 million. Now, net position includes all the capital assets that you have. They're depreciated value. So it's not cash. It's not something you can go out and spend. So water and sewer, $6.9 million, but that's gonna include the depreciated value of the, the, the lines in the ground and whatnot. Electric fund actually went negative this year, uh, in twenty-four to negative $433,000. One thing we noticed, you buy electricity, then you sell it. Your wholesale costs went up 11% in twenty-three and another 15% in twenty-four. So the cost of electricity for the city has gone up substantially in the past, just in the past two years. Before that, 3.4% for twenty-two. So the last two years, you've really taken a hit, um, in terms of that cost. The next page, I'm just graphing out that unrestricted fund balance, and you can see we went negative. But again, this is the same.
Can you go back before we get to this page? Go back, 'cause I wanna address water and sewer as well. Because it looks like we're, uh, negative on that, too.
Yes.
By, um, $800,000 or so.
Yes.
So essentially, what we're saying there is our expenses outpaced our revenues by $800,000. So rather than net positive, which it had been traditionally, it is now negative.
Well, it, it, we go all the way back to, um, I think the last year was twenty-eight, 2018 is when revenues exceeded. And we have a graph of this in a, in a few pages. But yeah, when revenues actually exceeded, the operating expenses was twenty, 2018, 2019, I think. I'm sorry, twenty, yeah, 2018.
No, I see, I see where we're talking about it now. And it used to be closer. I guess this year mirrors last year a little bit more, but it was closer before that. Although, I see a million dollars difference in twenty-one, but that was pandemic, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I will. Yeah, the other thing, um, um, is historically, you've transferred money out of the electric fund over to the general fund.
Sure.
Okay. And this year, um, these operating expenses for the electric fund, they only include transfers. 'Cause when you look at operating revenues minus operating expenditures, a transfer is not an expense of the fund. You're simply moving money from one fund to another. Uh, so just keep that in mind, and it kinda bears out in the graph in just a few pages.
Hey, Guy, whatever's bumping around, we're hearing it over the, the speaker here. Okay, can you mute yourself unless you have a comment? No, it's fine. That's okay. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. The next page, we're just graphing out that unrestricted general governmental funds. And you can see, um, the trend going back to 2013, you can see it's been working its way down. If we, if we were to say, it's, it's complicated, but if we were to say, what does that unrestricted balance need to be? You know, the minimum, we would say, is about 10% of your total budget. Um, so the minimum, we would say, is about 10%. Uh, for a city, we'd like to go even a little bit higher. In inflationary periods, we, we would definitely want you go, to go into an inflationary period with a bigger buffer. Um, so even in twenty, even 2018, 2019, even though we had a spike up there, that's still below where you would like to have that minimum, those minimum reserves. And clearly, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, um, same thing. It's just like, there's the same graph from last year. We've just added the, the one column. So, um, I feel like I mentioned that last year. The thing I'll point out here is overall general fund revenue increased in twenty-four about about 2.2% when we take out one-time sort of items. Actually, I think local sales tax dropped a little bit. Think about that. So the local economy actually slowed a little bit from twenty-three to twenty-four. Inflation was well above 2.2% in twenty-three, twenty-four. So we've got a gap. Uh, expenses are growing up faster than, than revenues. Meals tax was up a little bit, but what we were seeing in other places, it's up substantially because you just apply a rate times what the meal costs. Well, restaurants have been raising their prices. Uh, so we're seeing real big gains in other places. Your meals tax was only up about 2.3%. Um, so that's also a sign, people just aren't eating out as much. Um, or you have fewer restaurants, and there's not as much volume there.
So I think we need to spend a little time on the, the, uh, 2024 negative part. Help explain that, not only for us, but for anybody who might be joining us.
Well, really, in twenty-two and twenty-three, you got a big bump of money from the federal government. Some places got more, some places got less. You probably didn't get quite your due. If we look at other, we look at towns. Some towns actually did better than you. They're about the same size. Uh, when you've got schools, social services, courts, um, welfare, you've got the whole gamut of expenses. Uh, you really didn't get your fair share, I would say. Um, so we lived on that in twenty-two and twenty-three, and then it wasn't there in twenty-four. Uh, so you took out a revenue anticipation note. That shows up as a liability on the books. It just, it just takes unrestricted equity negative. Um, if you hadn't used any of that, if you had, it was a four-million-dollar loan, if you had four million in cash and four million in liability, it would've been a wash. Um, but you didn't. You used some of that cash by June, by June 30th, uh, quite a bit of it, so.
Well, Corbin, if, if, I'm sorry, um, if I can add on that slide as well, Mayor and Council, that had you not had the ARPA funds that were available in those years, that graph would've gone negative sooner.
Or we would've had to cut and raise revenues.
Sooner, yes, sir.
Which was part of our discussion that was here, and we were told we didn't have to. So that's part of the challenge that we're facing, sitting up here looking at this. So that's a little bit of the frustration I think the people up here are gonna be, uh, feeling as we go through this. But yes, I agree. Please continue.
Sure. Well, I, I think, um, and I, I mentioned to the crowd, when, yet, we've had 20% inflation in four years. Um, so if your expenses are going up by 20%, your revenues have to go up by 20%. Um, that's, that's just, um, the, the, the ARPA funds maybe probably caused some of the inflation, honestly. But, um, they were just a, a Band-Aid. So in the, in the long run, you know, the inflation that has been caused is gonna far outstrip the benefit you got. You got a short-term benefit for a long-term problem.
Sure.
Um, so that's where we are. I mean, um, that's, that's my take on it, at least.
Um, I'm sorry, go back one more time. Four million of that is accounted for by the RAN. It's actually four point.
About 4.5.
4.5. The .5, help us understand more about why that's in there.
Yeah, you really have to dig into it. Part, part of that is because the, the restricted balances have also gone up. And that's what I mentioned, some of the restricted balances. We could probably apply some of the amounts that are restricted. Say we've spent that money, therefore, your restricted balance goes down, your unrestricted goes up. So that's, that's part of the issue there, too.
Okay. Thank you.
But when you're talk, you're talking overall, uh, you know, roughly $70 million budget between water, sewer, electric, everything. There are a lot of, lot of things coming into play.
Right.
Net position, same, same graph we kinda, we showed you last year, not kinda showed you, we showed you last year. The red is the electric fund, and you can see, again, this is net position. That's total assets of the fund minus total liability of the fund. Um, you can see, you know, back in thirteen, it basically was positive 16 million. Uh, today, that has actually gone negative. Historically, you've transferred money, probably three to four million dollars a year from electric to the general fund. You know, those days are gone. Um, that, that's not gonna happen unless there are substantial increases in the electric fund in terms of rates. Uh, or there's some decrease in expense, which I don't see. Um, what you paid for electricity, you buy it, like I said, you buy it, you resell it. Up 11% in twenty-three, up 15% in twenty-four. Uh, if you told me it went up 11% in twenty-three, what's my prediction for, prediction for twenty-four? I never would've guessed that it was gonna, you were gonna be hit with 15%. I, I just would not have expected that. And, and we'll talk a little bit later also about what the assessed values are telling us as well. Water and sewer has started trailing off really since twenty-twenty-one. Um, net position has dropped to just over $6 million. You can see way back in 2013, it was about $10 million. Um, the other thing that, as you think about inflation, as I think about it. I have a great example. I bought a car six years ago for my son. I sold it six, I sold it a month ago and got more for it than I paid six years ago. You know, the utility of the car has gone down. It's six years older. He put thirty-some thousand miles on it. The value, the inherent value of that car has actually gone down, but the price has gone up. That's inflation. So not only do you see it in terms of this increase in expenditures, but the assets you own, cash, the value of your cash today is not what it was four years ago. You know, it's about 80% of what it was four years ago. It can buy you about 80% of what it bought you four years ago. Um, so you also have to look at it in that respect. So even though we have some localities that have an increase in cash balances, the value of that cash is not, they really don't have an increase because they can't buy as much with it. Again, this is net position, a graph that we've had up here for several years, and you can see it's been trending downward. Water, sewer, electric, solid waste is at the bottom. It, it's always been, uh, kinda floating between a million and $500,000. Water and sewer, and this is the graph I was telling you about that I was gonna show you. Excuse me. Uh, water and sewer, operating activity, again, operating revenues compared to operating expenditures, the red are gonna be your expenses. Blue, that's gonna be your, your revenue. Uh, and you can see there's a gap there that started back in twenty, twenty-nineteen, that expenses are just running more than, than revenues. Uh, the electric fund, big drop back in twenty, really probably started in 2012, I think, when the foundry, when the foundry left. Uh, big drop in revenues and expenditures. Operating revenues are slightly, they're right at where operating expenses are right now, to the tune of maybe there's operating profit of $100,000. Um, not much at all. And of course, historically, you've moved about 3.9 from the util, that fund over to the general fund. The assessed values, somebody said something to me, and I think it's, it's true. Real estate, the real estate assessed value, again, this is the assessed value of your real estate in the city, uh, from about $62 million back in 2005, we got twenty years' worth of data here, to 2024, we're, we're over $100 million. Uh, personal property, you can see, I was perfect timing of buying that used car and then selling it. Personal property, that's, I would expect that to, to come back down over time. Uh, you're starting to see manufacturers offer rebates again, so that's a good sign. Machinery tools, furniture and fixtures actually decreased over that twenty-year period. Um, so effectively, those are, are taxes on your, your local businesses. Uh, public service corporation assessments, that's, that's gonna be, not gonna be electric necessarily here, but it's gonna be rail, gas, anything like that that's, that's in the city, has been flat for the twenty-year period. Now, think about that. It's really not flat. That means they're not investing as much in the community as they, as they did. Because again, $2,005, we're comparing $2,005 to $2,024. So those values are just really way down. If you consider inflation, it's probably easily been cut in half. Overall, all assessed values together have been growing at about 1.9% a year. Okay? Again, we get back to inflation. We've got inflation at 20% over a four-year period. We've got assessment growth, our assessed values at 1.9% over a twenty, a longer term, long-term period, twenty years. What, I mean, what does that mean? It, in, in raw numbers, it means that the tax rate has to go up 'cause the assessments aren't, aren't moving it enough. If you've got 1.9 or 2% growth in assessments, and your expenses are growing up even by two and a half, 3%, then the tax rate has to go up to make up for it. Management comments from the audit. The first one is talking about those fire program funds. You have a lot of money sitting in, um, restricted that, we think you've got allowable expenses out there. You just have to document it, uh, so you can move that to unrestricted. Uh, disclosure forms, make sure everyone completes their economic interest and real estate disclosure forms completely. Uh, this is a comment we have just about everywhere. They're hard forms to complete. Someone at the city review them thoroughly once they come in and make sure they've been taken care of. We noted some errors in the data provided to an actuary. You send off data to this actuary who tells you what your post-employment liabilities are. Okay? We, we noted some errors in that data, which means that liability could be too high or too low. We, we just don't know. Um, so we just want you to double-check that data. Overall reconciliation of the, the books, and I did get a chance to talk to Janet about this, uh, this week, actually. No, last week. Um, and I think you're, you're just gonna be forced to move to one accounting system. What you might do, and what we are seeing in other places is, and I think what her concern is, you have an, you can have an assessment module that you use to assess taxes and bill taxes, and it can be interfaced with the general ledger package. Right now, you have two general ledger packages, an AS400 and Munis. Um, we need to get everything on Munis in terms of the general ledger package. But there is an option out there, and we're seeing more and more places go to it, where they use an assessment module that then interfaces with Munis or Bright or whatever system that you wanna use as your general ledger package.
Question about, I did have a question about that. Is that kinda where the bridge, it's like a bridge from, and it would be, would it be more effective than what we currently have? When you've seen these packages, what's your experiences with them?
Uh, they're better now than they used to be. Um, we, we see a number of them that are a bit clunky, if you will. More recently, I've seen some that work pretty well. Um, so it's, you, you gotta get the right one that works with Munis. So my recommendation would be go talk to folks that are using Munis and see what package they're using, and if they're happy with. And actually, go visit them, spend time with them, and see if they're happy with it.
But Munis has an assessment package, too, correct?
Correct, they do. And you can use that one, but, um.
Is it deficient compared to the others?
Yeah. Well, what happens a lot of times is you kinda, you build a general ledger package, and you're not an expert in tax. And so your tax package might not be as good as this other person's tax package as an expert in tax. Well, if you can take the best of both worlds and merge them together, you'll, you'll wind up with a pretty good product. Um, I think that's generally what we see. So that's why this, this, this notion even exists out there to integrate an assessment package with a general ledger package.
So I just wanna keep talking about that a little bit while we're talking about, 'cause this is something we've talked about for a decade. Um, we paid for Munis already, so everything that would be available in Munis, we budgeted for and paid for, correct?
And, correct.
And if we went with another package, we would have to buy that package separately, and so that would be an additional cost, additional IT for the bridge, correct?
My understanding, yes.
Okay.
Because we would, it would be something in addition to what we have. Because we would, it would be something in addition to what we have now.
Okay.
That's correct.
I just want to confirm all that that's we're going through.
Yes, sir. You, right now, you do have one of those software packages, the S, that's my, that's maintained on the AS four hundred. When, when, that's an old computer. And when it, when it goes, there's nobody bringing it back.
Now, that conversation we remember having every single year.
Yeah. Um, so once you go, it's gone. I mean, you don't have a choice.
Right.
So, at any rate. This is the same comment from last year, and this is going to be a tough one to, to sort out. When we went through the, the city's capital asset listing, in some cases, it's really hard to identify the property. We just don't have enough detail in the listing to know which parcel that is and we, we like to kind of compare. Spot check, if you will, and make sure that the parcels the city owns are all in the software and we just, we can't make that bridge. We're having heck of a time.
So again, pausing on that for a second, we've talked about that and we'd like to see about potentially getting those on the market anyway.
Right.
So that could be part of that project.
Information to share with the council on the parcels. And we will also pass that back through to make sure it's working on the other side too. We've been working on that. Budgeting process, which is going to be challenging this year. One thing we noticed is we were putting together financial statements, certain underlying relationships just weren't observed in preparing the budget. For instance, you have the State Comprehensive Services Act and you participate in that, you get money from the state, you spend money, you get money from the state. But there is a local match. What we saw in the budget was you had one point two budgeted expenditures and one point two budgeted from the state. So really, you ought to have a million budgeted from the state and one point two budgeted expenditures because there is a local match. Now, you're not going to be able to get that down to the penny, it's not just going to be twenty percent. Just look at, try to figure out those relationships in the budget that exist and make sure they're being taken care of or identified so you don't wind up over budgeting revenues.
Was that the first year that this has happened or has this been going on for a while?
You know, I don't know. I don't know if you looked back at other years.
I didn't look back, I did not look back at other years.
Thank you.
And right off general bills, late fees, that we, I think we found, there are a lot of late fees that are, are shoring up on some receivable listings. Approximately, and Diana, I think, wrote this comment up, that a lot of those businesses don't exist anymore, a lot of those people have passed on. So you're not going to collect that money, we may as well write it off. We do put an allowance on the books for doubtful accounts, so we, we're not going to overstate your financial statements by these amounts. But I think it just makes it cleaner if you go ahead and write them off.
That's a cleanup thing, but it is not causing a big impact to the budget saying that we have five hundred thousand dollars more we can expect than we're thinking about?
Correct, correct, correct. Yeah. The next couple pages, this is our letter to those charged with governance. And now, if we came in and, and Calista or anybody was kind of cantankerous with us, we'd report it to you here. We didn't have any problems completing the audit. We don't necessarily like the numbers in it, but we didn't have any problems completing the audit. So you get the boilerplate letter. It does talk about some significant estimates in the, in the audit. We don't know, we've got a liability in there for, for the retirement system. We don't know once somebody retires, how long they're going to stay in the system. Okay? So that's a, the present value liability. You know, if they make it past what the actuarial tables say they're going to make it, you're going to pay more. Your liability's gone up. If they don't make it as long, your liability's gone down.
Do we feel like it's understated as it is or just we don't know?
It's a we don't know.
Okay.
Uh, I'm trying to think of what the discount rate used on VRS is right now. Okay, six point seven five. So that's the discount rate used on those future liabilities. I think that's also their expected investment rate of return. Which might be a little high, but in, over a long period of time, it's probably reasonable.
Okay.
Over the next five years, that could be a little high. So you may actually see your. That's the healthcare discount. No, it's going to be six point seven five. I think it was seven and a quarter.
And Corbin, I meant to introduce Diana. Diana Everly, who's sitting with Corbin tonight. Diana is the one who was here with most of the fieldwork and worked most closely with Calista.
Thank you, Diana.
Yeah, six point seven five. You do get the boilerplate letter. Like I said, we didn't have any problems with management. Everybody responded, didn't have any issues there. We have our recommended adjusting entries. As part of this letter, we won't go through all those accounting recommended adjusting entries. And that includes, that's all funds, not just the general fund, that's general water, sewer, electric, garbage.
Can we just ask broadly, is this significant enough to create major issues with the budgeting process that would cause us to be imbalanced or to have other, other problems?
Say, yes.
These entries that need to be corrected, are they significant enough that they would reflect a big imbalance in the budget or something along that line?
No, I mean, these are, these are only to the actual, we don't make any adjustments to the budget. So these are only to the actual. I think you want to use audit figures, yeah. So when you're looking at, and we've got more detail than what's, believe it or not, a hundred and fifty-four pages and we have more detail. That's not in the report. We have more detail, so we can give, and we gave Craig, I think, a couple of weeks ago, detail of revenues going back five years maybe. So you can kind of see the, the trajectory. And probably expenditures too, maybe by department. I can't remember if it was line item or department, but. So yeah, so I think, I think you may want to use some of that or he may want to use some of that as you work towards a, a budget for, for twenty-six. And I will, I will stop there. You know, I, I think clearly the, the city's going to have challenges financially going forward. I think you're getting there earlier than some, but I think other places are all going to see, also going to see the same thing as they deal with inflation. You just didn't have reserves in place to kind of give you time to act. So I think that the reaction time is going to be pretty short. You have to move quick.
Anybody have anything else? Guy, do you have anything you want to ask or any comment you want to make?
No.
So you said you're seeing these in other areas? Other localities have this severe amount of, okay, because it sounded like you said that this is not necessarily a common thing, but you're kind of seeing this in other places. And this is, I mean, I, I audit for a living and this seems to be pretty extreme. And I was on council the past two years and I don't think that it was ever expressed to this level that we were in this type of situation from many places that I thought that it would come from, including the audit. You know, when I write exceptions, I make sure that the risk is very clear. And I didn't get this last year and it doesn't seem like that it was, I mean, I know it's worse this year for sure, but I didn't get this tone or feel from, from your offices when you presented last year, so.
Well, I'm sorry if I didn't convey that, but this is the same graph we gave you last year on the enterprise funds. So, I mean, the, the trend is, is there.
The trend is there for sure, but that's a big difference between the two years. And it's not anything that you caused, I just don't remember.
Right. Well, I think, I think you see between twenty-two and twenty-three, like I said, you had an eleven percent increase in your wholesale cost of electric. And then it's between twenty-three and twenty-four, you had a fifteen percent increase. So you can see that red line. You know, it had dropped to twenty-two, twenty-three, it took a pretty big drop and then twenty-four, even greater.
I mean, I can see the math. You know, your revenue has to exceed your expenses. That's, that's pretty simple. But I'm just saying, looking back at, you know, audit comments last year, it doesn't seem like that your office was portraying this level of decline.
I think we tried to express that we thought fund balance was too low.
Is it maybe because this increase in the electric has gone up even more, you know, exponentially more than what anyone anticipated? Because this is, it's pretty staggering.
It's significant. Um, I looked at my electric bill today. It's, it's significant and that drives everything, so it's not just, it's not just the city that's, all your businesses have to pay twenty-five percent more for their electricity. So when I say, we, we're gonna, I say we're going to see this in other places because they've had reserves heading into this recessionary period. They're starting to live on those reserves to try to, you know, they're going to try to cushion the blow to their citizens. I kind of look at it, you know, two ways. We have to build this back up definitely and get to a point where the reserves are adequate. At the same time, you've basically subsidized your citizens for quite a while.
Yes.
They've been provided a service and they haven't paid the hun, a hundred percent of the cost. So I mean, that, that's it. So they're going to have to pay it sooner rather than later. And I think that's the, what you don't have is you didn't have reserves in place, so you don't have the ability to spread that out over several years.
Well, and if I can tag on to that, one thing I was just sharing with Mike, I mean, the, the electric fund, as I shared with you guys last week when we talked about the business type activities. That was shocking to me and I think it's a double whammy. It's a, as Corbin mentioned, the, the increases in the wholesale rates over that two-year period of time were, were double digits two years in a row. And the city has continued to transfer approximately four million dollars from the electric fund to the general fund. In, in prior years, when revenues exceeded expenses in the electric fund and you had coverage to be able to do that, that was not a problem. It has continued to drain that net position, fund balance. And it, it caught up. The, the, the two massive wholesale increases plus taking in essence about eight million dollars over the last two fiscal years, about four million a year in a transfer, just wiped it out.
The, I'm going to keep going. The amount of general ledger entries that you proposed that we adjust, this, this looks like a lot of entries. Is this something that you typically see, this level of needed adjustments or are these needed adjustments? Are these suggestions that, that you are proposing that we do to correct things?
No, they're, they're needed adjustments, so.
Is this have?
I would, you know, I would say for most, most, a lot of localities hire a consultant. And so they hire a consultant to come in and help prepare the books for audit. You, you don't do that.
No.
So do we have more entries here? Probably a few more entries here than we would at a place that hires a consultant that specializes in preparing governmental financial statements. But are they a lot more? Probably not.
Okay.
So, so even the consultants wind up having, we recommend adjustments to their, their books as well.
Do you think part of the reason that we have this many or this level of adjustments in the different areas that I'm seeing is because of the two different accounting systems that we have? The treasurer being on a different system?
Not, not really. She's more or less cash basis.
Okay.
And the, the city is, is modified accrual, so, no, I don't think that's really it. I mean, I, we do, and I think we have a finding in the back of the report. That we identi, you know, we do have a finding in the report that said we, anytime we identify a material entry, you get a finding in the back of the report. And so we have that in the back of the report on page one fifty-two. But again, we have that in a lot of localities we audit. I would say seventy-five to eighty percent. We're just, if we, if we make a, if we recommend a material adjustment to the books and, you, you know materiality, you're an auditor. If we recommend a material adjustment to the books, unless it's a one-off sort of thing, we're generally going to have a finding in the back of the report.
Okay. And then we were talking about the two different systems, the, the Munis versus the AS four hundred, whatever system it's called. You said that, you know, we would be forced to try to get on the same system or do something. You didn't mean that somebody is actually going to force us, there's going to be some kind of regulation that comes in that makes us do it. You were just saying, this is what you're going to need to do and we've been suggesting that you do it for however many years before.
Right.
Okay.
If the power goes out on the AS four hundred, the next day, you're going to be on Munis, period.
Yes.
The treasurer's office would have to be on Munis.
I just wanted to make sure that, that was what you were meaning, that there wasn't some kind of regulatory.
No, there's no regulatory, six-month phase in. No, it's, it's overnight. Yeah.
Okay.
If it, if it dies, you got to move, yeah.
Yes, we do. Okay. I think that's all I have for right now. Sorry.
One question I have for you. So we have a negative four point five million dollar unrestricted funds. And then that doesn't factor in the, the eight year, or the eight months of twenty twenty-five where.
Correct.
So, so you know, I, I guess my, my question, just based off the audited numbers, what's a number that you would like to see us get that would get this balance level? I mean, even a net zero in reserves right now, but to, to start, you know, digging out of this. What, what, this time next year, what, what's a reasonable number we should be shooting for in that account?
Yeah, and Craig and I talked a little bit about that. If you could get to the point where you're slowly chipping away at that revenue anticipation note. So if you're decreasing that by a million, million and a half, two million dollars a year, I think that's reasonable. It's going to be tough to decrease it by more than, say, two million, I think, wouldn't you say? Yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be tough.
Thank you.
Be great if you could. But.
Well, and that, that's what I was going to add as well. And Calista and I talked about that some today as well. This is, this is not a one-budget season fix. This is not something that in the fiscal twenty-six budget, all these issues are going to go away. Because we, we can't cut that much and still be a city and we can't raise revenues that much to put, we can't put that kind of burden on our citizens. So it's, it's, it's going to be a multi-year turn, if you will. The key is just to start recognizing that we have an issue and, and to turn.
Yeah, this, this obviously, it didn't happen overnight, so you're right, it's going to take several years to, to get out of it.
Okay, so I don't think we can just continue to wring our hands here. So I am looking at the numbers from, the handout from the other day with the tax rate comparisons. And I mean, I'm prepared to at least go, you know, and at least go to the midway mark. We're below on almost every single target mark here. And so I propose that we immediately move these numbers so at least we're halfway and at least in the median range of what the localities around us are doing as a first step. I mean, that's just where we're at. And I don't think there's any amount of conversation at this point that's just going to change that. We've got to pay for the services we're providing. We may not be able to do it all, but we have to do something. So I'm proposing, we at least at the median rate.
And that's something that, I, I know the, the council has asked for a work session on Wednesday.
Yes.
One of the things I want to have on Wednesday is, and, and we've been pulling this all during the day today, but what is, what is a penny on the tax rate? What's a dot, and I think Councilman Wilford asked this last week and we've been trying to verify that we have the right numbers before we put anything out there. But what, what does a dollar on the, what does a dollar increase on water and sewer rates generate? What does a dollar on the solid waste, trash pickup generate? You guys need to understand the, the, the value of those dollars so you can then start talking about what are you comfortable with? And, you know, and if it gets a point where it's, I'm not real comfortable with, with, with looking at that, okay. Well, then we've got to talk about the services that we're currently providing and are there things that we can do differently? Charlie's still here, you're still here, so I'm going to pick on you. You know, one of the things we talked about in the interview when we talked with Charlie is, Charlie has experience in Salem, he has experience in Roanoke County, he has experience in other communities. And our citizens in Radford get some really great deals on the, on the services that are provided. And, okay, what, what are other communities looking for in terms of revenue? I'm not, I, I am not sitting here saying that we need to go through and raise everything on everything. But as the numbers clearly show, we can't continue to provide the level of service that we're providing for the revenues that we're collecting. There's, there's a disconnect. I think I said that in the first or second meeting I was here. There, there's a, there's a systemic issue with the budget structurally and it's come home to roost. We've got to deal with it.
I agree. And, and I'll add on to that too. I do think that one thing that we're also going to have to accept and acknowledge is, you know, some of these things that we've come to enjoy might have to be paused. I mean, we cannot overnight flip all of this onto the citizenry either. It has to be a balanced, mixed approach. And, you know, that might mean some disturbances in services and the, and what would that financially look like? I know we've asked those questions too in trying to balance it. I do think it's going to be a mixture of increases. I do think it's going to be a mixture of increases and, you know, some reductions where, where we can to spread out that burden. And trying to find out, and I know that you, Craig, you've been working on this, how, how that looks and, and how we can make up those numbers. And I mean, it's going to be a challenge, but I, I definitely think that we, we have to be a mixed approach.
Absolutely. And, you know, we, we kind of thought we were moving that way. Last summer, we spent a lot of time developing plans to get us further for the payoff. And so I know you all are still working through some of that to see what's been implemented, what can still be implemented, and then where we can go from there. So I know that'll be helpful as we talk some more on Wednesday. While we've got Corbin here, is there anything else regarding the audit? What we're, obviously, there's a lot of questions about what we're seeing, but things specifically the auditors can help answer. Okay?
Well, thanks for having me. If you do have questions, my contact information is at the bottom of the front page of the handout. So don't hesitate to email me or call me. Or if you want to see, we've got a lot of historical data. And you go, hey, what was Mills' tax like six years ago, and what is it today? We can tell you that. Just takes us a minute to run those reports, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you both so much for all your work. We do appreciate it. And we appreciate you coming into a very difficult situation as we talk through this. Thank you for helping us think through it a little bit and move forward. Counsel, is there anything else you all would like to talk about before we take a break? I know we are going to have a work session beginning at 6:00 PM on Wednesday. A little bit of that time, we are going to have a closed session on personnel. And then we're going to talk a little bit further about budget and where we are with that. Anything else? Okay, all right. With that, we will stand adjourned until 7:00 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thanks.